Good evening, everyone. Good evening. This is City of Lowell's only Board of Appeal Public Hearing for April 25th. If you wish to participate and speak on an item, please sign in as the lecturn. And also, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we are also, the meetings also occurring remotely through either smartphone, tablet, or computer device. Before we get started, a few housekeeping matters. If you have a cellphone or device, can you please put it on silent or turn it off? And if you have any discussions, please take it outside to the hallway to not disrupt the meeting. We're going to go into other business. We're going to take some stuff out of order this evening. In other business, we have the Master Plan Steering Committee. The Department of Plan Development is looking to form a Master Plan Steering Committee that will help oversee the process, ensure public participation as a key element of the master plan. The committee will consist of approximately 20 or 30 community members. Representative Lowell's diverse population, a portion of the seats on the steering committee will be used to appoint petitions that will include one representative from the various boards and committees. The zoning board will vote to appoint one member to the Master Plan Steering Committee this evening. Anyone want to speak on behalf of this at all?
I'm Christine McCall. I'm the Assistant City Manager and DPD Director, and I am just here asking for the ZBA to appoint a member to participate in the steering committee. For anyone listening at home, we are soliciting resumes and COVID letters from community members that wish to participate on the steering committee. We'll likely meet quarterly, either in person or virtually, just to make sure that the engagement process over the two-year master planning process is as inclusive as possible and make sure we're reaching all communities throughout the city. In addition, once we secure a consultant and kick off the project, there will be multiple working groups and public engagement. So even if you're not a member of the steering committee, there will be plenty of other opportunities to participate. And so with that...
Thank you, Ms. McCall. So does any of the members have any comments before we do?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to mention, Christine, that steering committee, community members, the cutoff date for providing information like resumes is this Friday?
Yes, we initially did a deadline of April 30th. We may reopen or extend that deadline, but we're working from that for now. So if folks are interested, we encourage you to apply at masterplan@lolema.gov, or you can mail it to my attention, 50 Arcand Drive, 11852, or drop it off anywhere in City Hall, and as long as it's to my attention, it will make its way to my office.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Thank you, Ms. McCall. Any comments from the board member?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Brier, go ahead. Flow is yours, sir.
I wish to nominate Dennis McCarthy to serve as our representative on the Master Plan Board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brier. We have a nomination from Mr. Brier to nominate Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, I would also endorse Member McCarthy. I think his vast experience and knowledge and prior experience with architecture, I think he would make a great representation of the board. Thank you.
Second member, Mr. Prokop, thank you, sir. Kimball Roll call, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. There's no motion required. Sorry.
Can't wait to get started.
Vice Chair Pegg.
Approve Dennis McCarthy to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Which order am I going in? Member McCarthy.
Approve my appointment to the master plan. Thank you.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve.
Member Noroge.
Approve.
All right. Ms. McCarthy, congratulations on behalf of the board. I think you have the most vast knowledge and understanding of zoning and housing, so you make a fine representative for the board. So we wish you the very best of luck, sir.
Thank you very much, the fellow board members, and I look forward to this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our regular scheduled agenda under Continued Business, we have ZBA-2022-3 Variants. The applicant is 505 Capital Partners LLC, property located at 38 to 40 Swift Street. 505 Capital Partners LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeals to a subdivision in existing lot at 38 to Swift Street and constructing new family dwelling. On the new lot, the property is located in the traditional neighborhood, two-family zoning district, and requires variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum maximum front yard setbacks, minimum side yard setback, and minimum rear yard setback under section 6.1.10 to exceed the maximum allowed curb cut and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. So we got word that, is anyone here from Swift Street, probably in Swift Street, here on Zoom? No? All right. We got communication that they request for a continuance to May 9th. So we can have a...
Motion?
Motion. Thank you, Ms. McCarthy.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-3 for variance at 38 to 40 Swift Street to be continued to May 9th.
Second.
All right, motion, Ms. McCarthy, continue to May 9th. Second member, Mr. Brier, Kimball Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Pegg.
Approve continuance.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
Member Noroge.
Approve continuance.
All right, that's matter been continued to May 9th. This is the public hearing for that continuance, so there'll be no other posting. This is the public notice right here for the public. Going under Continued Business, we have ZBA-2022-15 Variants. The applicant is Kimberly Aponte, property located at 1467 and 1469 Gorm Street. Kimberly Aponte has applied to the zoning board of appeals to split the two lots for zoning purposes and construct a single-family home on the newly created lot. 1467 Gorm Street is located in the traditional two-family zoning district, and 1469 Gorm is located in the traditional single-family zoning district. 1467 Gorm Street requires a variance approval to pursue in section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum yard, side yard setback requirements pursuant to section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street requirement and any other relief required under low zoning ordinance. 1469 Gorm Street requires variance relief pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and minimum frontage requirements and any other relief required under low zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Aponte. I'm the owner, and this is Lisa Robinson.
Good evening, good evening, folks. You want to tell a little about your project?
Yes. So I was working with Dylan Ricker.
Yeah.
And did you receive the updated site plan? Okay. And I actually brought, I put out some pictures that I took to show for the driveway where they're saying, he wanted to know the measurements. The landscaping piece actually shows the 48-foot line, and if you go to the site improvement plan, you'll see that both driveways are going to be parallel to each other. So that, I hope, would suffice for knowing what the measurement is going to be. I do know that there's supposed to be a three-foot buffer between the lot line and the particular driveway, and I have another picture just to show that there's an existing driveway there where it does not touch the front of the house, the main home, and then there's an addition. So yes, the addition part, approximately, I'm thinking about 14 feet of it, will not have that buffer where it's not supposed to hit the house. We're fine. We've talked with our contractor about the sidewalks. There's actually an existing opening already. It looks bare and tear. The engineering department wants us to make it nice and pretty. There's, I think there's three sections of the sidewalk in front of the house that just need to be filled in. We're going to take care of that as well. We're going to be putting some shrubs in front of the new home. We actually added it to the new landscaping, I believe, that you received. I sent that in too. We're going to give you a lot of green. We feel that we actually have a pretty decent lot size for each home based on the characteristics of all the other homes around the neighborhood. They seem to be definitely under 5,000, 4,500 square feet. We're going with a traditional home. I sent in the plans. We're going to have the nice little architecture look, and it's going to be cute. It's going to complement the neighborhood.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Anything else you want to share before we open up to the public?
No, I think we're okay right now.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll open up the hearing to the public portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of the public hearings closed. So we're going to open up question and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, flow is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the updated site plan, which does make a little more sense as far as the driveway. Let's see here. And I believe, have you had any discussions with the stormwater team? Because I think that was one of the concerns that they had.
Yes, we will be required to get the permit. We did have that updated as...
I'm sorry, can you speak to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did have that actually added to the site improvement plan, and I did get a call from a gentleman, I want to say Michael, but I don't remember the name, and he said, you know, once you have that, I'll take care of you. You need to come in for your permit to make sure that you're complying.
Okay, perfect.
This is my second stormwater management that I've worked with.
And I believe you also made some additions to the utilities, the water, sewer, gas. You've made those enhancements on...
Yes, those are in the revised site plan.
Yep, yep, yep. Well, you know, I drove by several times, and I noticed today there was some work going on around there. And looking at the neighborhood, it is conducive to what's already there. I don't foresee any particular issue, but I would like to revert my board members if they have any concerns. So I'd like to...
Thank you.
May revert back, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, flow is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for this very thorough application. It was continued. Was it continued because you were gaining more information to respond to the comments? Or is...
I didn't send my butters list out in time.
That's what it was, okay. But in the meantime, you've been able to address all the comments.
Yes.
Which is wonderful.
I have some good people working.
This is the way applications, in my opinion, should be done, because you really have provided the material that I particularly need as a member to understand what you're trying to do and how it affects the community, and how you're working with the city to do something that's in character with the neighborhood, that makes sense.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate the effort that you went through with the documentation and bringing all that material tonight for the first hearing.
Thank you, that means a lot.
Well, it means tremendous amount to me as a member, and I think my fellow members would appreciate it as well, because it should be the standard, and it's wonderful to see when it happens.
Thank you.
The new house that you're putting in meets setback requirements and open area and off-street parking.
Open area?
Usable open area in the backyard. So you're undersized in the lot area, I believe, and that's the characteristic that is asking for the relief, for the new lot, which is amazing that you can do that.
Yes.
That's such a large lot that you have over there, but you can meet the characteristics for zoning except for the total lot area.
Right.
And then the existing lot, existing house, which has the larger of the two lots, has some issues because of the way it was built, where it doesn't have the side yard setback, it never did, and it was built in a manner that made sense for the day, but doesn't make sense for today's zoning.
Correct.
So you're looking for relief on that?
Yes.
And then you've decided that we'll have to add relief for that parking, because it does abut the home, it doesn't provide the three-foot offset...
Yes.
For a small portion of that distance. Most, the majority of the parking is with the three-foot or more offset, so...
Correct.
I think that I can support this. It does seem to make sense in that neighborhood especially, and judging from the community involvement, that you don't have any people speaking ill of this location having this additional property, I can't see a reason to not go forward with this. I do would like to ask that we provide the condition as requested by the planning department, that we condition it, that the, I think it's condition, condition one, I think, is already allowed. Condition two would be that the applicant obtains stormwater approval for the project. And so this will be the first condition. It's listed as condition two, but it'd be the first condition. The second condition was the applicant shall submit updated plans addressing the engineering department comments, which you seem to already have, whether or not they've seen it or not, I don't know, but that would be just the second condition that I'd like to ask my fellow board members to support, but...
Absolutely.
I see no other reason to add any more conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the flow is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the construction of this home will complement the neighborhood, and I look very favorably upon the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the flow is yours, sir.
Yes, I would like to recommend the petitioner for a thorough application here. However, I have a few questions for DPD. For the curb cut, have the new site plans addressed that, for the nine-foot curb cut?
Yeah, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I do believe that the site plans showed compliant curb cuts. They would just need to apply for a curb cut permit from the engineering department, where necessary, there's an existing curb cut, so they may only need one.
Okay. And the new site plan addresses that? There's a lot of documents here, so I'm not sure we have a new site plan. Is that part of the condition that engineering requires?
You could condition that. They would have to apply for the curb cut permit regardless, just it's from the engineering department.
Yeah, so if, you know, if the three conditions that Member McCarthy are addressed, are applied, then I would have no, I would have no issue approving this petition, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Norobe. You're all set, sir. Thank you. Ms. Aponte, I think, you know, I think you doing this home and subdivision slot and making this, these new units actually fits in very well with the neighborhood and with the character. And, you know, I think overall, the goal, especially of the master plan, is to create more housing. So I think, you know, it solves, it solves a major housing problem we have all over, all over the world, actually, not just here in Massachusetts. But, you know, so like my colleagues said, I think this only adds to the value of the neighborhood and to the city, so I don't have any concerns, objections either. So we'll go forward with a vote, and then you understand the conditions that we talked about, the stormwater approval, and you're in agreeance to all that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we have no further comments from my colleagues. If we could have a motion, please.
I just want to be clear. Member Noroge, we're going to add a condition regarding the compliant curb cuts, as you said, your question, okay. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-15 for variance at 1467 and 1469 Gorm Street with three conditions. First is that the applicant shall apply for a street opening permit to create a compliant curb cut on the 1467 Gorm Street lot. Second condition is the applicant shall obtain stormwater approval for the project. And third condition is that the applicant shall submit updated plans addressing engineering department comments.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop. Kimball Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Pegg.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve with conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approve with conditions.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you the very best of luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is my daughter, by the way.
Well, congratulations.
I'm very proud of her.
Have a good evening, thank you. Going on under Continued Business, under New Business, we have ZBA-2022-16. The petition is variance. The applicant is Maggie McHale, property located at 22 Bellevue Street. Maggie McHale has applied to the planning board and zoning board of appeals seeking a special permanent variance approval at 22 Bellevue Street. The applicant seeks to convert the existing two-family residential building into a three-family residential building. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires a special permanent approval from the planning board pursuant to Article 12.1c to expand residential structure to units. A variance pool pursuant to section 6.1 for relief from off-street parking requirements and off-street parking dimensions, section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirements, and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. We've, is anyone from Bellevue Street here tonight? Oh, good evening, sir. Do you want to just...
Sure. My name is Maggie McHale, I'm the landlord.
Okay. And you have a question, you're continuance?
Yes, sir.
To our May 9th meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else you want to add before we go? Just, okay. All right, we have a motion to continue the matter. Oh, excuse me, strike that. Mr. McCarthy, yes, go ahead, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-16 for variance at 22 Bellevue Street to be continued to May 9th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue matter to May 9th. Second by...
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop. Kimball Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Pegg.
Approve continuance to May 9th.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve continuance to May 9th, 2022.
Member Noroge.
Approve continuance.
All right, the matter has been approved and continued to May 9th. We'll see, we'll see you in a little bit, sir, in a few weeks.
Sir.
And just to the public, this is the public notice, notice that this matter is continued to May 9th. There'll be no other notice required. All right, moving on to our next agenda item under New Business, under ZBA-2022-19 Variants. The applicant is Angela Galaza, property located at 239 Mansour Street. Applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals for variance approval to construct a covered deck on the property. The property is located in the suburban and single-family zoning district, and requires one variance for floor area, FAR under section 5.1, and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Is anyone here for Mansour Street in person or in Zoom? Anyone in Zoom? Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Contrumbos? Did we get any communication about our continuance from them that I'm not aware of? Okay. We'll just table this item, maybe they're, table this item until later in the evening. Maybe they'll be back later. All right, so we'll just table that to later in the evening. We'll move on into Under New Business. ZBA-2022-22 petition is a variance. The applicant is ZR Development Group LLC. The property located at 74 Boys of Us Street, 253 West Sixth Street. KR Development Group LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board and Low Zoning Board of Appeals to redevelop the existing St. Louis School Building at 74 Boys of Us Street and 253 West Sixth Street into 19 residents with 24 off-street parking spaces. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood multifamily TML zoning district. The application requires site plan review under section 11.4 to construct more than three dwelling units and special permit approval for the conversion of an existing historical school under section 8.1. The applicant also requires variance approval under section 6.1 for relief from off-street parking, space requirement under section 8.1.34 for relief from the minimum square footage requirements and for any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Is there a representative from Boys of Us Street or West Sixth Street here this evening? No one on the Zoom either?
I was told it was continued till May.
Okay. June, June, right? They request it continues to June, right? I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we've been in communication. The matter before us is requesting continues to June 13th. There's no comments from my colleagues who make a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-22 for variance at 74 Bovera Street, or 253 West Sixth Street to be continued to June 13th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Kimball Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Pegg.
Approve continuance to June 13th.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June 13th.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance to June 13th. Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June 13th.
Approve continuance to June 13th. All right, we've been in communication. The matter before us is requesting continues to June 13th. There's no comments from my colleagues who make a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-22 for variance at 74 Bovera Street, or 253 West Sixth Street to be continued to June 13th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Kimball Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Pegg.
Approve continuance to June 13th.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June 13th. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. 2022. All right. We have a motion to continue the matter. Oh, excuse me, strike that. Mr. McCarthy, yes, go ahead, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. The application that I saw submitted did not include a site plan. Is there a possibility that when we do get the full package, that the site plan would be included?
Sure. Did he send it? He sent it. My contractor, he said he sent it.
Well, okay, maybe there is one that exists. If, if there is one, then we're all set. But I looked online at the documents that were posted, and I didn't see it. So I will do a better job looking again, but.
If he's not, if he doesn't have it, I can bring it over.
If there is one, then we'll just kind of get that straightened out and see where it is. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McHale. All right. There's no more comments or questions by the board, but we'll move to a motion to continue this matter to May ninth.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A twenty twenty-two dash sixteen for variance at twenty-two Bellevue Street to be continued to May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter to May ninth. Second by?
Second.
Second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair PAC.
Approve continuance to May ninth.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve continuance to May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Member Noroge.
Approve continuance.
All right. The matter has been approved and continued to May ninth. We'll see, we'll see you in a little bit, sir, in a few weeks.
Sir.
And just to the public, this is the public notice. Notice that this matter is continued to May ninth. There'll be no other notice required. All right, moving on to our next agenda item under new business, under ZB A dash twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, a variance. The applicant is Angela Galaza, property located at two ninety, two thirty-nine Mansour Street. Applicant has applied to the zoning board appeals for variance approval to construct a covered deck on the property. The property is located in the suburban single-family zoning district and requires one variance for floor area F A R under section five point one and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Is anyone here for Mansour Street? In person or in Zoom? Anyone in Zoom? Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Contrumbos? Did we get any communication about our continuance from them that I'm not aware of? Okay. We'll just table this item, maybe they're, table this item until later in the evening. Maybe they'll be back later. All right. So we'll just table that to later in the evening. We'll move on into, under new business. ZB A dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two petition is a variance. The applicant is ZR Development Group LLC. The property located at seventy-four Boys of Us Street, two fifty-three West Sixth Street. K R Development Group LLC has applied to the low planning board and low zoning board appeals to redevelop the existing Saint Louis School Building at seventy-four Boys of Us Street and two fifty-three West Sixth Street into nineteen residents with twenty-four off-street parking spaces. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood multifamily T M L zoning district. The application requires site plan review under section eleven point four to construct more than three dwelling units and special permit approval for the conversion of an existing historical school under section eight point one. The applicant also requires variance approval under section six point one for relief from off-street parking. Space requirement under section eight point one, point three, four, for relief from the minimum square footage requirements and for any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Is there a objection from Boys of Us Street or West Sixth Street? Here this evening? No one on the Zoom either?
I was told it was continued till May.
Okay. June, June, right? They requested continues to June, right, I believe?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We've been in communication. The matter before us is requesting continues to June thirteenth. There's no comments from my colleagues who make a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two for variance at seventy-four Bovera Street, or two fifty-three West Sixth Street to be continued to June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair PAC.
Approve continuance to June thirteenth.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve continuance to June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Member Noroge.
Approve continuance.
All right. The matter has been continued to June thirteenth. Just for the public record and public notice, this is the public notice, if we know the notice is given. All right. Moving under new business to our next agenda item. ZB A dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three petition is a variance. The applicant is Lydia Blanchett. The property located at one sixty Merrimack Street. Lydia Blanchett has applied to the zoning board appeals to convert one existing commercial unit into one residential unit at one sixty Merrimack Street. The subject property is located in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The project requires special permit approval per Article twelve point one C for the use. Variance approved per section six point one for relief from off-street parking requirements and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Good evening, folks. Just your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Joseph Clamart, four ninety textile Avon Drakett. I'm representing the petitioner, Lydia Blanchett. She is a principal of Buie LLC, and she is the owner of the condominium unit at one sixty Merrimack Street, Unit B. This particular building, there are two commercial units and two residential units, and the applicant owns one of the commercial units. They would like to convert the unit from commercial to residential, a residential unit of about nine hundred ninety-six square feet. And to orient you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have some photographs of the site, if I could pass them out.
Go ahead, Counselor, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again to orient you, the top photograph is the Merrimack Street entrance of the site. As you walk in the door, it's a bit of a split level. If you go off to the right and go down the staircase, it's the tavern known as the Safe. And up to the left, if you were to go, if you look at the bottom-left photo, there's a set of stairs, two half sets of stairs, that access the upper level. The bottom-right photograph shows the hallway, and the door to the right is Sweet Lydia's. That's Ms. Blanchett's unit, and Mill City Cheesemonger that share that unit. So again, as you, as you walk into this site, you would go up that double set of stairway, stairs, and access the hallway to get to their unit. The door straight ahead accesses the residential units, and Ms. Blanchett's unit is up and behind the storefront. Just by way of background, the applicants bought the condominium and opened Sweet Lydia's at that site in two thousand and twelve. As the business developed, probably more than fifty percent of the sales actually ended up being online, and they did not find a great retail presence for, for the business. They sold the business in two thousand and eighteen, and the new owner increased the wholesale sales and the online sales, especially during the pandemic when people weren't going out to visit the commercial sites, and the retail really didn't pan out for them. The business owners are looking to move to a better retail space, and they've notified the owners of that. The applicant offered to lower the rent to try and help them out, but the space is just not ideal, unfortunately, for retail, the way that it's cited. We received the, and reviewed the notes of the design planner, who indicates that residential units and uses are encouraged, especially as part of a mixed-use development, which this is, but they indicated they would prefer to limit the residential uses on the ground floor of the urban commercial area. So that was a concern of theirs. Here, however, the condominium is not a ground floor unit, and it's not a storefront unit. You do have to enter and go up the stairs to get into the unit. Excuse me, and go through the hallway to access the unit. Here, it would seem to be suitable for residential use. The building would retain a mixed commercial and residential use. There are two residential units there now. The city was concerned that would it be setting a precedent, converting a unit of this type to a residential? But in fact, because of the uniqueness of this site, I don't feel there would be any precedent set. The board, of course, has control over all conversions moving forward. So if any other business was looking to convert, that would be obviously taken on a case-by-case basis, and the storefront may be, may be different. With regard to the applicants, they're not large property owners. They're a young couple with young children. They've tried to make a go of the business and just couldn't. They've been losing money. They're currently losing their tenants. They're very concerned with the long-term sustainability of this unique commercial unit. I would say the project does seem to align with multiple sustainable Lowell twenty-twenty-five plan goals, and we, we feel it's inappropriate use to convert this to residential. With regard to the parking, it's unlikely a residential unit would create more parking concerns than a commercial unit, but we've submitted a, a letter from the Lowell Parking Director that there is available space in the Leo Roy Market Street Garage, which can be leased monthly to meet any parking requirements. So we had respectfully request approval of the special permit for conversion to residential in the variance for parking. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for your comments. Anything else you wish to, to say before we open up the hearing to the public?
Nope.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate that the business that's there now is actively looking for new space, and we're not trying to kick them out. We wouldn't go through with any conversion until after they left. We're just preparing for the inevitability that they've informed us they're working towards.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Blanchett. All right. So now we'll open up the hearing to the public, and we're wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor, in favor. Hearing on, on that portion of public hearing is closed.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Your, your name and address for the record, please, and yet, go ahead.
My name is Joanna Hall. I am actually a former, not former, but business owner. Was formerly downtown, now outside of downtown. And I would say, I would definitely think that I'm in favor of this, for sure. Being downtown as a business is extremely difficult, as is. It's not an easy task. And, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions on, on that side of things, but I can speak for, as a business having been downtown and as an individual, I can see why converting that to residential would be requested, and I think it would actually be better for downtown. I think we all kind of walk through and see a lot of empty spaces, and especially with how things have changed and turned in the past couple of years, this can only benefit downtown, not harm it. That's my opinion.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Hall, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition, in favor, in favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. We'll open up comments and questions to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the chair, the floor is yours, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I can understand why it makes sense at this point to turn this into residential. And there's nothing to say that we can't turn it back to commercial if commercial happens to become a viable alternative down the road. But to have an empty space or a space that's not doing well versus have a space that has additional people in the downtown to support the businesses downtown that are already there makes more sense to me. So I, I think that this application makes a lot of sense. It does struggle. I, I've always thought this is a very lovely building. I remember going to the Safe. My, my wife, actually, before we were married, worked in the shop on the upper level, which was a little bit quirky, on, on, on the, on the, what we're calling the ground floor, which is really like the first floor, sort of. And I would go in there and see her, and it was just an odd kind of arrangement to get to it because it's not on the street. You don't really see, and you have, anyway. It, it does, it does present some issues the way it's designed. I think it might have been a bank at one time, which might have made more sense. But in any event, I think this, this is a worthy change to make to this building and to get some vitality into that unit and to support, have more people living downtown that support the businesses. So I'd like to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I've read the, the comments from our chief planner, and I do understand what she is saying or he, he is saying, and I, and I agree with it. If, in fact, this was your classic ground floor unit, I don't see it as such. As, as Attorney Clamart so explained, you enter the building, it's either down a flight of stairs or up two half sets of stairs, and the unit that we're considering tonight is almost hidden. Truly not visible from the street. So I don't think it would conflict with what the chief design planner is, is saying. So as a result, I think this is a doable project, and I, I favor the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recuse myself of this petition. I have previous dealings with some members of that, of the petition. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Norobe. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with my fellow board members. You know, if I was to be a little nostalgic, I wouldn't go as far as Mr. McCarthy where he met his wife. But, but I would say at that particular place, there was a bakery there called Charo's Bakery. And I used to, you know, all of my kids, you know, you know, birthdays and so forth, I would, I loved that place. And I do appreciate Attorney Clamart's comment because it, it did strike a concern where the planner thought that it was being built on a floor, on, on the ground floor, which apparently it, it's, it's obviously not. And that would have been my concern as well. But seeing the design of this, of this structure, and, and as you said, the uniqueness of it, it, it does make sense that you can convert. And as Member McCarthy said, if things change, you can re-convert back to commercial. So I would vote in favor of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Just like my colleague said, Counselor Clamart, you know, it's, it's a tough time for everybody, and I actually think this conversion from business to residential makes a lot of sense. And the, the relief you're seeking for the variance, it, it merits a lot of, meets all the criteria, in my opinion, so. And like we've been talking about, you know, housing is kind of a, a big need in the city, so it totally makes sense. It's, it's a win for everybody, I think. So we'll go, we'll, we'll vote now, and then we'll have two votes. One for a special permit for this, and then one for a variance for off-street parking, yeah. All right. If there's no other comments or questions from my colleagues, we'll, we'll, we'll go to a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a special permit for ZB A twenty twenty-two, twenty dash twenty-three at one sixty Merrimack Street.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair PAC.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member, Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve.
Member Noroge.
Accusal.
All right. You've been approved for special permit, and now we're going to a motion for the variance.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three at one sixty Merrimack Street for variance for off-street parking.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair PAC.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve.
Member Noroge.
Accusal.
All right. You've been approved. Wish you best of luck, and thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. So we'll go back to, under new business. We had a petition not show up. Two thirty-nine Mansour Street. The applicant is Angela.
Collesso.
Collesso. Thank you, Mr. Brier. They're applying for a variance to approve or construct a covered deck on the property, and the property is located in the suburban single-family zoning district and requires variance for a floor ratio under section five point one and relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Is an applicant for Mansour Street this, this evening? Not on Zoom, nothing? And we didn't get any communications out there? They needed a continuance or anything? If it's okay with my colleagues, we'll, we'll continue the matter then to... What, what do folks want, May ninth, June thirteenth? Maybe, maybe June thirteenth? We're a little stacked on May ninth.
Or the meeting after the ninth would be the twenty-third?
Yes.
So, so we'll continue Mansour Street to the May twenty-ninth, if, if my colleagues are okay with that?
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, strike that, May twenty-third, I meant. All right. Seeing no, no objections to that, so we have a motion to continue ZB A dash twenty twenty-two dash nineteen to, to our May twenty-third meeting.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue ZB A twenty twenty-two dash nineteen for two thirty-nine Mansour Street for variance to May twenty-third.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by, second by Mr. Brier. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chair PAC.
Approve continuance to May twenty-third.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve continuance to May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Member Noroge.
Approve continuance.
All right. The matter has been approved to May twenty-third. Just for the public record, this is the public notice. There'll be no other public notice. That matter is continued to May twenty-third. Now we'll go on, go on to other business. Before we go minutes for approval, I just wanted to add one thing to the public record for the Master Plan Steering Committee. I just wanted to read this into the record, for the record. This is from the chairman, Gary Perrin. He just, he emailed us earlier today. He, he just wanted me to read this into the record. Gary Perrin, I would like to show my support to Mr. McCarthy for the Master Plan Steering Committee, April twenty-fifth. So I just wanted to read that into the record, and we also got communication that Mr. Callan also supports Mr. McCarthy to the steering committee. So I wanted just to read that into the record. All right. Under other business, for minutes for approval for April eleventh meeting minutes. Is there any comments, questions, edits from anybody? Going once, going twice, going three. Seeing, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy for the minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Proko. Can you have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair PAC.
Approve the minutes for April. Approve the minutes for April 11.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for April 11, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Peroco.
Approve the meeting minutes for April 11, 2022.
Member Nuroge.
Approve meeting minutes.
All right, the minutes have been approved. If there's no other questions or comments from Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I would just like to express my gratitude to my fellow board members for nominating me to the steering committee for the master plan. And I will provide regular updates from that steering committee to the board just to keep everyone abreast of hopefully where we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Like I said, I think you'd be a great representative. Your in-depth knowledge and background and vast just vast skill sets. It's perfect for this role. So thank you, sir, for your willingness to be part of this. Anyone else, any other comments from the board? Seeing none? We have a motion to adjourn, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Mr. McCarthy, second one by Mr. Brier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening, folks.